During tonight's council meeting, through passage of a resolution authorizing city staff to submit a letter of support on behalf of the council for a legacy small grant in the amount of $10,000 which is due on July 13th. As context for that request, I want to thank the city staff for their support in gathering the necessary information for quality discussions with the American College of the Building Arts, a nationally recognized academic institution that is exploring development of a second campus on the Kirkbride property in the service buildings slated for demolition as part of Phase Two. Because an anchor user of the service buildings is potentially present, there is the ability to develop the rest of the space for makers, creators, and entrepreneurs from our region who are starting and growing businesses. When we were seeking one party to develop the whole Kirkbride complex, our often repeated community vision was for that party to somehow include a maker space in those service buildings. That opportunity is now ours to make happen. Tonight's request begins that community business development effort. The maker, creator, entrepreneur spaces will be facilitated by nonprofit organizations that need to commence collaboration and identification of costs associated with targeted space renovation. The legacy grant is well suited for financially supporting that purpose. Due to city ownership of the Kirkbride, a letter of support with specific focus is required for submission of the grant application by the nonprofit partners by July 13th. The letter of support should specifically affirm that the grant parties and their associates would have full access to the property for all usage and structural assessment that the grant request addresses. Your support in this business advancing effort is sincerely appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, boss.
Obviously, are we just going to add that to the agenda to discuss or we're going to talk about it now?
With the July 13th deadline, we either have the option of discussing it this evening or I don't know what the other option would be other than Wednesday at a committee meeting, which if we wanted to take action, I mean, that would give people time to think about it, research it. I think we're actually, it's an official meeting of the city council on November 3rd. If we needed to take an action, I guess.
Oh, we can just add it to tonight's agenda.
Okay, sure. Is that acceptable? We'll add it to tonight's agenda? All right.
Come up now, Bill. We'll get started in just a few minutes.
God of all life, you call us to live in community and teach us to care for one another. We pray for those whose position and authority affect the lives of others. Please inspire them with a vision of the community as it might be. For love of neighbor and concern for one another drive out discontent and strife, anxiety, and fear. Help us all to work together with one heart and will, with sympathy and understanding to serve the common good, to minister to people in trouble and despair, and to multiply true happiness among us. We ask these things in your holy name. Amen.
Allegedly to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
5:30, July 2nd, 2018, I'll call this meeting to the Fergus Falls City Council order. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 Yep.
We have a quorum. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda, and I will call on Andrew Brumseth, our city administrator. Do we have any additions or corrections?
We do, your honor, members of the council. Under petitions and communications this evening, we have to add a proclamation declaring July Park and Rec Month in Fergus Falls, and there's a proclamation on each of your desks. And then if you're wishing to add the item that Ms. Josephson just spoke about at the open forum, I would suggest that goes under new business at the end of the meeting.
With that, is there a motion to approve?
Your honor, would it be? At the committee of the hall meeting, I asked if it would be possible to talk about H2M. Can we talk about that under kind of old business? And with that, I've made the motion that we accept the amended agenda.
Is there a second? Thank you, Justin. Thank you, Anthony. On fair the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All same signed, motion carries. There are no public hearings this evening. Under awarding of bids, we will need a resolution awarding the bid for public improvement 5312, which is in relation to the College Way Street Improvement Project. Brian Uvaro.
Thank you, your honor, and good evening, members of the council. Last Tuesday, sealed bids were opened for the College Way Street Improvement Project to resurfacing and partial reconstruction of the base project from Tower Road to Western Avenue. That's state SAP number 126124002. A total of three bids were received at the time of the opening. Central Specialties Incorporated submitted the lowest bid in an amount of $515,237.57. The engineer's estimate cost was $680,000 for this work. Interstate has reviewed the bidding documents and prepared the associated bid abstract. That's enclosed in your packet for additional reference. If you recall, this project, we had to do some, recommended to do some aggregate repairs on this project, so we will be doing impacting some of the traffic. There's been a staging plan that's also been incorporated, and there's a localized area where these potential areas are for these excavations. So if awarded, we will start with a pre-construction meeting, and from there, we'll get the contractor's schedule, and then in turn, start notifying all the adjacent owners and the community as a whole. So at this time, I'm requesting this council award the construction services contract to Central Specialties Incorporated in an amount of $515,237.57.
Thank you, Brian. Is there any questions from the council? If not, as.
I'll make that, your honor.
Thank you, Anthony. Thank you, Brent. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Thank you, Brian. Under petitions and communications, the first item, we will look for a resolution acknowledging the retirement in years of service from Tim Hanson, and I will read that resolution. Whereas Tim Hanson has submitted his intent to retire effective July 6, 2018, and whereas Tim began his employment with the city of Fergus Falls on April 19, 2004, as a stationary engineer, and whereas on June 3, 2007, he moved into the position of a solid waste laborer, and whereas on January 1, 2008, he moved into the position of park maintenance, where he has remained until the present time. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Fergus Falls, Minnesota, to accept Tim Hanson's resignation and thank him for his 14 years of dedicated service to the city of Fergus Falls. The above and foregoing resolution was offered at a regular council meeting held on July 2, 2018 by council member Fish, who moved his adoption and was seconded by council member Ruffer, and was adopted by the following vote. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Resolution is approved, and I would say thank you. The second item, under petitions and communications, is a proclamation recognizing Park and Rec Month in the city of Fergus Falls. It'll be excerpted here. Whereas park and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the city of Fergus Falls, whereas our park and recreations are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region. Whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors, whereas the city of Fergus Falls recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources. Now therefore, I, Ben Shire, mayor of the city of Fergus Falls, do proclaim that July is recognized as Parks and Recreation Month in the city of Fergus Falls. There is a copy of the consent agenda that was included in each of your packets. There's also a copy on the screen. If there's any items that anyone wants to remove and discuss individually, you can do that now. If not, I would entertain a resolution accepting the consent agenda. Thompson, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Under ordinance and resolutions, first item is a second reading of ordinance 77 Series Planning Commission, and this has been to committee. It's been discussed. If anyone has any questions, they can ask them now. If not, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Item number two is a resolution approving a Minnesota investment fund loan for Brent and Kirsten Lanowee. Sorry, I butchered that name. Doing business as Extreme Marine, and I'll call on Amy Baldwin.
Mayor, councilmembers, before you this evening is a request for the city's participation in financing the purchase of the property where Extreme Marine is currently located at 1110 19th Street in Fergus Falls for Brent and Kirsten Lanow doing business as Extreme Marine. The city has, staff has reviewed the bank loan write-up, which is Farmer State Bank of Underwood, that contemplates a city loan participation in this acquisition of $69,000. And the loan itself would have a 15-year amortization schedule, a 10-year balloon payment, and an interest rate of 3%. These terms are consistent with other real estate-driven loans that we've done recently. The collateral for the loan will be a second position behind the bank on that real estate that the property, the business is currently located on, as well as a second position behind the residential mortgage on the borrower's home located in rural Underwood. The city will receive their, per policy, a 1.5% origination fee to cover our expenses and time in administering the loan, as well as personal guarantees from the borrowers, key man life insurance assigned to the city. As mentioned, the loan is $69,000, which is about 30% of the financing needed for the project. Looking at closing this loan in mid-July, the operators have been in business and leasing this particular property since 2006, and would like to purchase it in order to allow for some expansion of their shop space and improve some of the existing spaces that are there today. They also own some other operations that are complementary to this particular business unit, and those would be continuing as well. I'd be happy to answer any questions on this loan request.
Any questions for Amy from the council? If not, is there a resolution to approve the investment fund loan?
I'll make that, your honor.
I'll second, your honor.
Justin? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Thank you, Amy. Item number three is a resolution adopting an amended resolution authorizing the submission of a 2018 Greater Minnesota Regional Parks and Trails Commission funding application for the Glacier Edge Trail. And I'll call on Ryan Miller. I didn't see you there, Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, councilmembers. At the June 14 city council meeting, I did request a resolution for authorization to submit a grant application to the Greater Minnesota Regional Parks and Trails Commission. That resolution was approved and written for authorization for an application for the Glacier Edge Trail from Veterans Park through downtown to the dairy site and up to the M-State campus. Since that time, staff has submitted an application to LCCMR. I do have a map up here, it kind of might be a little tough to read with some of the colors, but we have submitted an application for a separate project to the LCCMR, includes sections of the Glacier Edge Trail downtown and also the pedestrian bridge. We presented to the commission that request on June 27, and we should hear whether we're successful or unsuccessful on that grant on July 17. But this resolution that we got back on June 4 was for the Greater Minnesota Regional Parks and Trails Commission. That application is due July 31. So since that resolution, we've considered our options for the stretch or section that we're going to apply for, for the GMRPTC application. Staff is recommending that we kind of scale down on that stretch, which is the reason for needing an amended resolution to not include going all the way to M-State campus is what we're hoping to cut out of that application. So that's, the request is an amended resolution. We have a couple of options to consider in the resolution if we want to put in a specific section that we're applying to. So our first option is when we hear official word on that LCCMR grant, July 17 through 18, if we hear that we are successful on funding for the trail downtown from Veterans Park to Union Avenue, we can then turn around and request a GMRPTC from Union Avenue through Barefoot Park, but cutting out that section up to M-State. If we find out on the 17th that we're unsuccessful with LCCMR funding, we could then turn around and request a GMRPTC for the downtown stretch that we didn't get funding for from LCCMR minus that pedestrian bridge, which we'll apply for again next year to LCCMR. Or we could also consider the downtown through the Barefoot Park section as well. It's a larger ask to the GMRPTC, but that's certainly an option. But to keep it simple, though, we were requesting an amended resolution with some flexibility in what we're going to be asking for for the GMRPTC application based off of our results from LCCMR on July 17. And I'm not sure if you've seen that before or not, but yellow section there, it's kind of covered by the green line. I apologize for that, but that's what we've applied for currently. Again, if we're not successful with that LCCMR application, staff is proposing that we apply for the green line, which is downtown from Veterans Park all the way to the start of the dairy site. We could also apply for the red section, which would go from Union Avenue through Barefoot Park. So just some options to consider, but requesting amended resolution, scaling down that project from Veterans Park all the way to M-State campus that was given on June 4.
I question, so currently, the resolution that's passed on June 4 goes from, in addition to what you have up here, it's from Barefoot Park all north to M-State campus, correct? So you're eliminating that portion of the request at this time, and what you're asking for is flexibility based upon the results of July 17? Is that the way I understand it?
Correct.
Could I ask a question, your honor? I believe I heard him say that they're not only eliminating the Barefoot Park, the M-State section, they're eliminating the dairy property for it ends at Buze Street, and that is a major amount of off-road trail. So at some point, I would like to speak to that in relation to the project.
And with that, just so everyone's on the same page here, if the, I think, if I hear what you're saying is we're eliminating the Barefoot to M-State regardless because it's just too much of an ask, and then based upon July 17 feedback or results of that LCCMR funding, then you decide whether you re-ask for that section through the Greater Minnesota Parks and Trails, or if you maintain the original request as the June 4 resolution? Is that accurate?
Right, so there's two parts to the amended resolution. Like you said, one is just scaling down the project to not include the section from M-State to Barefoot Park, but then also allowing some flexibility on what we do include in the project once we hear from LCCMR on the 17th.
I just want to make sure that I understand what the ask is. Go ahead.
Yeah, and because of its complex project, your honor, I'd just like to put a few points up on the screen if I could, so I'd like to speak to that. So I started on this project four years ago, and I've been working on it quite a bit. I'm on the Greater Minnesota Regional Parks and Trails District Criteria Board for Funding. I'm also on the PR board. Sorry, I'm also on the Public Relations Committee. So I have a fairly good understanding of the workings of the committee, I believe, and have been behind this project from the very get-go. So the ask before us tonight in your packet is an alternate amended resolution, that is, or excuse me, the ask before us tonight in these slides is an alternate amended resolution to what's in your packet. I'm asking that eventually we vote down this two-parted resolution, which I believe has complications that are unnecessary, and we ask for only one thing, a trail from Union to Barefoot Park, which includes the dairy property. Next slide, please. Where do I punch something?
You print yourself the keyboard out or just?
Sorry, I haven't been up here before. All right, so which one is it that I hit if I want to go forward?
Down.
Just the down arrow?
You're down now, Roddo.
Okay. So this is an older map. I didn't have one at the last minute to put up, but you understand that the LCCMR ask we just did takes us with a bridge under the river at this point, and it includes connectivity over to Union and connectivity over to the east side in Veterans Park. That's the LCCMR ask that we just presented for about $600,000. Nine of the 14 miles currently run through off-road scenic trails. These are crucial to our funding. Why is this? Because their criteria means, requires that you have a majority of your trails off-road. So this is crucial to the funding request and isn't considered in this option two. Just remember that we need to have off-road trails and a majority in our requests. So we've asked the LCCMR for funding for 2019, and LCCMR are lottery monies, and they're dispersed yearly. Funds are received within one year. So we have asked the LCCMR funding for 2019 to put the bridge in, and about $600,000 will know by July 18 or July 17, as the case may be. The Greater Minnesota Parks and Trails Fund, which is a different pot of money from the sales tax, is received in two years. It takes two years to get it. So just make sure you note that. LCCMR is one year, Greater Minnesota Parks and Trails is two years. So if we started a trail at Union and Stanton and continue to Barefoot Park, this would include 4,325 feet of off-road trail on the dairy property and 2,588 feet of trail along Stanton Avenue. That's 1.6 times the amount of off-road to on-road. It's a crucial criteria for the ask, 1.6 times off-road versus on-road. The reason I'm requesting that we have a singular ask to the Greater Minnesota Parks and Trails is that because the LCCMR funding is yearly, we can go back again next year and ask for a bridge if it's not approved. We can have a similar request next year. So we get another shot at it. The Greater Minnesota Parks and Trails funding requires a two years to deliver, so we have this other chance, and I believe we should use it and not risk missing a two-year window and go back and be pushed back farther in our trail. Reasons for a single ask continue. It's crucial that each funding request contain a majority of off-road trails, as I've said. It's also, I also support a singular option from Union to Barefoot because option two, as presented in the packet, has 1.3 times the amount of on-road as off-road. 1.3 times on-road as off-road. This creates a problem for the evaluation team because they ask that you have a majority of off-road trails in your request. The final point, if we do not receive our ask from Greater Minnesota Parks and Trails, that is, if we risk doing it this way that's in the packet, then we'll be two years behind beginning our construction on the centerpiece of the trail, which is the dairy off-road property. And I'm glad to take questions on that. I've been in on the committee meetings and talk. I presented this to the staff, and I wanted to present alternative because I've stated consistently that it's better to ask for a large ask now that includes the dairy than to leave it off and be possibly delayed two years. So.
Thank you, Rod. Anthony, Joe.
On the $600,000 ask for, from LCCMR, that, obviously approximately about half of that is for the bridge. What's going to happen to the trail on the, on the south side of the river as opposed to the north side?
Ryan, did you want to?
For the LCCMR request.
The LCCMR request obviously had the, has going from Otter Tail Power's office, crossing on the east side, and then going underneath this bridge, and then going along.
So the request would be for upgrading the riverwalk on the south side of the river from Veterans Park across Cascade Street to just near the proposed bridge crossing by Otter Tail Power and the dam. I know then cross the river to the north side. The remainder of the riverwalk from near, you know, between the sewer crossing and the dam, from that point on, the remainder of the south side of the river, the riverwalk would remain unchanged. It's just an upgrade of the riverwalk from the bridge to Veterans Park to allow for the 10-foot wide.
And how do we propose going from the river end, either through Mill Street?
It would go underneath Mill Street, then it would, so go adjacent to River Inn, underneath Mill Street, adjacent to the federal courthouse, and then it would tie in directly with the design work that's being done for the amphitheater and river balcony behind the downtown parking lots. It would tie in with that, that section of the downtown.
And will the city put any money into that?
We don't have any commitment for matching dollars for the LCCMR project.
So what is our likelihood of getting it? Do we know?
Well, I did hear good things from the presentation. You guys must have done a good job.
We presented on June 27. Thank you, mayor. We presented on June 27. We, it's our first attempt at that application. We have received LCCMR funds without a match before on our first attempt as a city, so it's potential that we get that. If we don't, though, the risk is if we don't get that funding, then, then we don't have the trail portions in our downtown master plan stretch to tie in with what else we're doing with the river balcony and the amphitheater. So that would be the risk of not including the downtown portion in our GMRPTC if we're unsuccessful with LCCMR.
Any other questions, comments? So, well, we should get a resolution of some sort on the, on the table.
So since the resolution's been presented, you know, I'm, I'm suggesting that we vote down the two options, and then we embrace the one option which includes the dairy property, which allows us that off-road that we need for the criteria to be accepted. Otherwise, we're shooting ourselves in the foot on the criteria.
So I think what you're saying, Rod, if I, correct me if I'm wrong, you're So, I think what you're saying, Ron, if I, correct me if I'm wrong, your resolution would amend the June 4th resolution to simply exclude Barefoot Park north to M State.
Right.
That's the part. So, you're just offering a resolution to?
Oh, Union, and I don't know how it relates to putting it in the other, I mean, the other resolution, I think, has to be voted, the option, right? Or are we just?
I don't see it presented.
There's some main, there, I mean, there's your options.
Okay, so I'm just suggesting a singular option. I'll make that resolution, that we go.
Which is already in the current June 4th, if I'm correct. So, you're just?
Just stick with option one.
You're just naming the portion just to exclude Barefoot Park to M State, if I, if I'm understanding you correctly.
Right, yeah.
I'll second that. I got a question, just for point of clarification. Do we also need to add into that, uh, proposed amended resolution that we have the, uh, flexibility to that deadline date with, we know for success on the LCC Mar as well? Is that more?
Unfortunately, that's Tuesday, the 17th, I believe, correct?
Correct.
Well, I say unfortunate because we don't, we have a meeting on Monday, the 16th.
The next council meeting is Monday, the 16th, and we would hear on Tuesday or Wednesday, the 17th, 18th whether we're successful on LCC Mar or not.
And I'll just add one other thing, Your Honor, that with the Greater Minnesota Parks and Trails, everyone should know that it is very advantageous to submit a proposal for review by staff prior to submitting your final proposal. So, to push it very up to, much to the end and do a last-minute proposal also handicaps us. That is, if we were to present Union to Bare, you know, that first option only and start on it now, which is what we have to do, otherwise we have to wait until the 18th to present an option that we won't have time to vet with the consultant, Joe, and that's very disadvantageous to us. Uh, again, I've worked through this process and, you know, I, I think I understand the workings of it, and I think there's a lot of good reasons. They're trying to leverage money, but it, it actually will hurt us, I believe, in the long run. That's why I'm asking that we just go with option one.
Any thoughts, questions? We have a resolution and a second to that resolution. Roll call, please.
Hefford.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Cooper.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Thank you, Ron.
Thank you.
Uh, item I is presentation of claims. Tonight, we have claims in the amount of $961,778, $778.53. If you have any questions, I will direct them to our city, Assistant Director Bill Sommer.
I will have the resolution to pay the bills.
Thank you. Jim?
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Under reports from staff and administrative officers, we have the employer's support of the Garden Reserve Support Forum and BOSS Lift Update, and I know that, uh, City Administrator Anthony, uh, Andrew Bremseth had the pleasure of riding on a Chinook helicopter up to Fort?
Ripley.
Camp Ripley. But I'm going to call on Ron Lindgren to, uh, speak about the program and give us a little update on the efforts.
Thank you, Your Honor, and council members. I brought with me tonight a statement of support for the Garden Reserve. It's a thing that the City of Fergus Falls has done in the past, and we ask that it be signed by an official from the City of Fergus Falls. It says, "We fully recognize and honor and comply with the Uniform Services Employment and Reemployment Act." It's called USRA. It's a federal law. We provide all our managers and supervisors with the tools they need to effectively manage their employees who serve in the Garden Reserve. We appreciate the values, leadership, and unique skills the service members bring to the workforce, and we continually recognize and support our country's service members and their families in peace, in crisis, and in war. Uh, I'd like to have Andrew probably give a little bit more on the ESGR. As the local rep, I'm a volunteer for the Department of Defense, and it's an opportunity for the leaders of the City of Fergus Falls to get a time and space with employees that work for the City of Fergus Falls up at Camp Ripley. We embarked on a helicopter ride out with a Chinook, and I appreciate the mayor's cooperation in coordinating all of that. And I think if Andrew would give a little briefing, it's probably more, it's a win-win situation both for the employee slash Garden Reserve members and for the employers, because now we get an opportunity for these people to communicate. They each see what they do and what it facilitates to be able to have that situation in both war and peacetime. And, uh, from there, I'll let Andrew go.
Thank you, Ron.
Your Honor members, thank you, Ron. It was a wonderful experience a la, a week ago from Thursday. Mike Hartwell, the Human Resources Director, and I were lucky enough to be selected to board a Chinook helicopter here at the Fergus Falls Municipal Airport. And, um, if you haven't been on one, I highly recommend it. You'll, you'll look at the Chinook and you're thinking, there's no way this thing's getting off the ground, but they, they piled us in there and told us it would be okay, and, uh, I'm here to speak about it. But, um, no, it was, it was a really great experience at Camp Ripley. We were treated with great hospitality, and the ESGR program, uh, put, put together a really powerful day. We spent some time, uh, with the Bradley vehicles, which is kind of a miniature version of a tank. Uh, got to watch them firing, got to go inside. We saw the latest drone technology. We were, uh, privy to a mortar demonstration. We got to see some of the sniper rifles. So, just a really full, fun day to see what our National Guardsmen and our Reserve soldiers do, uh, while they're over there at Camp Ripley. As you all know, we have employees that are in the Guards or that are veterans, uh, most notably maybe Matt Harrington comes to mind here at City Hall, and it's, it's interesting to see what they do when they go over there. And, um, this program's really great because it provides both the soldier, which is our employee, but also the employer, the opportunity to have ongoing communications, to provide support and services for these, uh, gentlemen and women that go, um, that are deployed and then come back to work. I learned that, um, if their deployment is less than 30 days, they're expected to return back to work the next day, no questions asked. You know, as the service gets longer and longer, there's, there's commitments that the employer has to make to the employee, and folks like Ron, who volunteer for this program, serve as the liaison between both the city as the employer and also the soldiers that are over there, advocating for their rights, for our rights, and making sure that if there is a discrepancy or differences of, of opinion, there's somebody who has, uh, been on both sides of it that can help us through that. So, um, really great experience, nothing but good things to say. I probably won't forget that anytime soon, and, and was really honored to be able to have the opportunity to do that, and, um, I thank you, Ron, and all the other volunteers.
I'd like to have a special recognition to Lieutenant Colonel Erickson, who was the Battalion Commander of the Second of the 136. Our National Guard unit here in town is part of that Second of the 136. So, uh, he took a great majority of his day while the training was going along with his sergeant major, and at different times throughout the day, he came in and made special presentations to all of the people that were there. And, uh, like a good heartfelt thank you, and I'm sure Andrew feels the same as I do, that, uh, it was a, a nice thing for him to take out of his day, and he made some special arrangements for us that we could see things that were not normally on the agenda.
I was told I couldn't speak about those things.
(laughter)
So, heartfelt thank you to you, Ron, for all your passion and your commitment to doing this as well, so thank you.[1114.63][1114.63](applause)
Do we need a, uh, motion to do that letter? I would offer that.
Thank you, John. I'll second. Right? Uh, and a motion's fine, correct? Motion directing Andrew to sign the proposed letter, that's fine. On favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign that motion carries. Next item on the agenda is an economic development update, and I guess I will just, uh, start the conversation and say that, uh, this conversation really started late last fall in response to the announcement that Target was, was, was closing, and so inside City Hall, we started that conversation, and in early 2018, Andrew, myself, and Amy went to Bemidji and took a look at the model of, of their economic development, what the role the city plays in that. And the discussion was really just based around what is the proper model for Fergus Falls, and how do we best leverage all the resources we have in the community and all the people that are, uh, working towards economic development? How do we put that into a package that works for, for our community? And, um, we, so we had those discussions within, within City Hall, some discussions as well within the community. In May, the council got together and put that as one of the, um, top priorities of the city, was to have a model of economic development where the city was a partner, but it also leveraged that so the broader business community was a partner in those economic development, um, decisions. And so, in light of the events that have happened since then, and most recently the announce, the announcement of Sunmart to close, I think it's, I would, I would believe that it's time to change that from an economic development update, but to an action. I think that we've identified as the council that we want to see the city be a part of a broader economic development team, and so I would ask the council to consider, uh, ways that we can form, uh, separate nonprofit 501(c)(3) for the purposes of economic development in the city. And so, with that, I would guess we just open up that discussion here amongst the council.
You know, maybe I can add to, uh, to some of your words. I and a group from the Downtown City Council, which two, at least two of them are in here tonight, we also had the opportunity to go, um, up to Bemidji and talk with both Rita and Dave about, uh, the, the way that Bemidji had been operating their economic, um, team. And it seems like there's this, um, cycle where, you know, city runs economic development for a period of time, and then it, it goes outside of City Hall and gets ran by, um, an organization on the side that has more flexibility and ability to do certain things that the city can't do, and then it kind of comes back, you know, and I think some of that probably is ebb and flow is a little bit about where the economics are at the time and also some of the decisions that get made. But when you look at Bemidji, you know, their present model is working extremely well. And, you know, they, they have somebody dedicated full-time to job creation and economic development. And I think that that's something that we absolutely need to get back to because, uh, job creation is, is key. Um, you know, I, I'm not sure that there's things we can necessarily do to change corporates' mind about retail. The retail space is changing, um, but there are things we can do to persuade people to bring jobs to Fergus, and if we create jobs in Fergus, then that's, you know, that's a, a strong foundation for our community, um, which we haven't necessarily been as focused on job creation as, as, you know, we should. We've lost a lot of jobs, um, with the number of stores that have closed and, and other businesses. You know, Hidl's is, is closed as well as restaurants closing. So, I, I would support the mayor, and the time is now is for action, for us to do something different. And, you know, personally, the creation of a kind of a Greater Fergus Falls organization and get that partially funded by businesses in Fergus as, as well as, you know, limiting the exposure of the city to how much it funds is, is now. You know, there isn't time to procrastinate, um, you know, we need to do it now. Um, you know, when you look at kind of this, this physical space that's vacant, it just keeps growing, and we have to do something to, to turn the tide, and tonight is the beginning of turning the tide.
I would just add a couple of things that, I'm going to make sure that everyone's clear. This is, the events that have happened are not the fault of the city, the city council or any employee of the city. They're just, they're events that happen in the, in the world that we live in today, and there's a capacity issue. I think it's ti, I think it's important, and as Anthony mentioned, it's, these things are cyclical. Morehead, as, as you guys, if you read the newspaper, they've had taken this approach, and now they're trying to reel that back in. So, we'll, we'll probably be there someday as well, but, um, the, the, I think in this current environment, we have to look at what the city does well, and I think that community development is something that we do very well, and we have the capacity to do very well, and we have enough projects on our hands for, uh, quite honestly, more staff than we currently have. So, to engage the broader business community in an effort, um, of economic development, and quite honestly, similar to what has been, has, has happened in the past in response to, uh, some serious events in the business, uh, sector in the community. In the mid-'80s, first economic development initiative in this community was around, uh, and Jimmy, you were around at the time, Project 500 in response to the, uh, Medallion Kitchen Fires and the closure of Rosenblatt's. They lost 500 jobs in a matter of about 12 months, and a group of business, along with, uh, representatives from the city, came forward and said, "We're going to create 500 jobs in 500 days," and then they went out and did it. I think we need to take a similar approach, and, uh, as a result of that, actually, I have reached out to one of the key people in, that was involved in those, um, in, in the jobs that were created during Project 500, so, person by the name of Bruce Stone, whom many of you may know, and, uh, he has, uh, expressed a sincere interest in being part of this venture. So, I would hope that that 501(c)(3) organization would negotiate with him and see if they can come up with a, a, a contract for him to be involved in the future of that organization. I will say one thing, make sure, and Anthony hit on it, this is not, uh, another expense for the city. This is leveraging the, the business and the private, uh, sector in these efforts. So, I don't anticipate that the city is, is, uh, would levy for this in any way. In fact, um, I think, again, to some of the models out there that, that, uh, around, the city is a partner, but the city's not the only stakeholder.
And I'll just add my support to the initiative, you know, and I think it's, it's really a win for, for all involved, you know? We're, we're freeing up, um, you know, Andrew and his staff to focus, you know, more on those community development efforts, um, and then also asking a group of stakeholders, business owners, executives, um, business leaders, community leaders, to come together and to, you know, to really do, to focus on what's going to be best for, you know, economic development, growing jobs, keeping businesses here, bringing new businesses in, and then having that one full-time person that's, that's their laser focus. So, I think it's a, a big step forward in the right direction that, uh, needs to be taken.
Jim?
I would add also, I think it's a very, very, uh, good thing to do, and, uh, I know Bruce personally, and, uh, Bruce will do a fantastic job he did the last time around. Uh, he's got a lot of contacts all over, and, uh, he, he knows where to look and where to find people to come in, and, uh, I think it's very good that we're looking to do this. Do you have any idea who else is going to be on that committee?
The way that, I, I don't. And I think that that's not, uh, for any one person to decide. The way that, and after talking with Rolf, a path forward would be that if the council gives me the authority to set the, um, set up that 501(c)(3) incorporators, name incorporators, and then obviously there has to be an initial board, but that would be a partial board for those people to get together and then for them to fill out the, uh, the question for. Is that accurate, Rolf?
Yeah, and we talked about, uh, the city having a, uh, providing its blessings towards this venture by simply having the city, uh, authorize and direct the mayor to appoint a committee for the sole purpose of, of acting as the incorporators of this 501(c)(3) corporate entity, which means that they would file documents with the Secretary of State, organize themselves, come up with their own bylaws and rules, uh, but the city would basically be the, the entity standing behind for purposes of providing the initial support and encouragement to move forward in this direction. Uh, but this company, this, uh, nonprofit entity would be completely separate from the city, uh, and, uh, they, they would be, uh, free to determine what their rules are and whether they wish to have a city representative inclu, included on their board, how that would look, uh, and, uh, I, I think, uh, it's a step in the right direction, and it shows the community that the, that the city is moving forward, uh, with, uh, addressing a concern that is, is, is here.
I think it's a good idea. I was going to ask a question about the process and if, wonder if we could follow a similar process where you often, uh, put out names for different appointments, et cetera, and then the council has a chance to, uh, because I assume this is going to be a public record appointment. It's not private, right? I mean, you can't, so I mean, that we could?
Well, the incorporators.
That you would bring the names and we would approve it, as we do many other committees and other things that we are involved with, that we, or is that not the way it works?
I think, quite hon, sorry. Quite honestly, in this instance, I don't think that's necessarily the best idea, just because I, I will name incorporators and an initial, small, first board, let them get together. Let them get together, and let them come back to the city when they need something. Let them fill out the—the board, give them broad discretion to create the—the entity that they see. So really removing the city's hand in this—to whatever step I think we can. You want to do?
I would offer the resolution to allow the mayor to set this board up.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Thompson.
Yes.
Speedo.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Next item on the agenda is under Old and Unfinished Business Invention Abatement Agreement, and I believe that the county discussed this at their last meeting. Nick Leonard, would—I call on you to give us an update on this?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Nick Leonard. I'm here representing Otterdel County. Commissioner Reigness is also here this evening in the event you'd like to hear from one of our commissioners regarding this topic. I'm here to talk to you about on June 18th, the council approved resolution—adopted, I should say, resolution number 122, if you recall. This was a resolution supporting a abatement agreement for Inventure Properties out of St. Cloud as it relates to the Catholic Charities Building, which is at 1010 Maryland Lane. The reason I'm here tonight is just to update you, let you know that the county also approved an abatement agreement on June 26th last Tuesday, and we're moving forward with developing an abatement agreement, which is, as you recall, the next step in this process. So as you did, we approved the abatement, but that doesn't necessarily just means that now we get to move into the next phase, which is an abatement agreement. Lots of times, you'll actually approve an abatement, and that will never come to fruition for different reasons. We're hoping that we can continue this process forward. But before we—so in the process of doing that, one of the things we looked at is some of the feedback that the council made at your June 26th meeting, and specifically, we just want to make sure that—to the extent that we're able—that we're lockstep as it relates to developing this abatement agreement. And a couple items that—in—in reviewing your minutes from June 18th, I should say, you expressed some concerns about specifically job creation and tying job creation to this abatement agreement. And I just want to get some clarification for our board. That will have implications as it relates to our abatement agreement. We—we are not likely to tie job creation to this abatement agreement, and so just get some feedback from the council. If that is your intent, if so, then we need to be clear on that for our own agreement so that we can work with the developer to determine next steps. So if it'd be possible, Your Honor, council members, to get a little bit of feedback on that, I would appreciate it.
I believe, Anthony, I believe you brought this up, so all of us.
All right, okay. Thank you, Your Honor. I think where I was coming from is that, obviously, it's a private entity that's buying the building, and—and they're going to lease that to the state. And my concern was that we, as a community, are being asked to obviously abate the taxes when, you know, why wouldn't they just either ask, you know, the owner of the building to reduce the price by that much? Or it—it just—it—it seemed like the private entity is going to be the winner out of this ultimately, because they're going to get a building that they're paying somebody for, and then obviously they've got the lease payment that's coming in from the state, and then they're not going to pay any taxes on it. Yes, it's obviously good that we—we end up with those jobs in our community, but we're—we're kind of subsidizing the jo—we're subsidizing the builder, or the—the property owner of the landlord. And I have a hard time in doing that without there being some—some benefit, you know, or an assurance from that private entity that we're getting something out of it. Because if they just disappear and, you know, all this—because I think we were told the state can give, you know, they can—they can stop the lease in 30 days, then, you know, the—the property obviously would sit there, again, not collecting—we wouldn't collect any taxes, but we wouldn't have any jobs either. So I—I think that was my concern, was then—obviously, the old Job Z program linked, you know, obviously benefits to, you know, creation of X jobs and paying people, you know, above minimum wages and benefits, et cetera, et cetera. So—and—and this is obviously a little bit different, because you've got a third party involved, and the state, and then they're—they're asking us, obviously, to subsidize their business.
Your Honor, Councilman Hicks, by all means, certainly, job creation is often attached to abatement agreements, and I—I certainly support that in such instances as that it's appropriate. In this particular instance, just to provide the history, this is—essentially, we're taking a state—currently, the state is leasing our 60-bed—the county-owned 60-bed facility. It's called a care facility at 1174 Western Avenue. It's a large facility, too large, to be perfectly honest. They're using 16 of a 60-bed facility. Catholic Charities has been open or vacant since about 2015, and so just to—just to remind the council, up until 2015, there wasn't any property tax being created as a result of this, because it was owned and operated by Catholic Charities. The overwhelming likelihood is that, in fact, it's to the credit of the Fergus Falls Economic Development Staff, that this was actually identified by a private entity, because the overwhelming likelihood is that this will go back to a nonprofit and be operated as a nonprofit, or alternatively, it will be purchased by some type of governmental entity, whether that's the county, state, some other entity, and again, not be generating revenue. So while, yes, for the past two years, it has been operating or generating some tax revenue, it—it—in my opinion, the likelihood is going forward that it—that it won't. In this particular scenario, I guess I see the economic development component of this not necessarily as the jobs that will be created by the state. Yes, there will be jobs. But in—in my mind, this is a vital service that we need. It's chemical dependency treatment for our area. If you talk to any of our staff at the county, this is a critical, critical service that we can't afford to lose in Otterdel County, in the Fergus Falls area. And so from an economic development perspective, it's my belief that the economic development or the economic infusion that we're providing is that we're ensuring that people that need chemical dependency treatment get that treatment and can get back, hopefully, into jobs and becoming citizens, functioning citizens within within our communities, taking jobs, providing providing that—those—those services. And so by all means, I'm—I'm supportive of that. In this particular instance, we'd also be tying the hands of a, essentially, tenant to determine how many jobs the state provides. And they simply—I do not believe that they'll go along with it. So the reason I'm here tonight is because if that is a requirement of the city, it's my belief that one of two things will happen. Either they'll ask for greater abatement from the—from the county, or to your point, is they'll ask for higher rent from the state, which I—I also think is unlikely to happen. So supportive of the—of the—of the concept of—of job creation in—in many scenarios, I—I do have concerns about it in this particular one.
Could—could you just address, though, obviously, this—and I—I have had a conversation with Commissioner Reigness, so I've got some of my conscious answer, but I think it would be beneficial for other people to hear, too. Maybe you want to just speak to the 60-bed county kind of property, because obviously, you know, this, you know, we're—we're really shifting them from, as you say, the county property to the Catholic Charities Building. So, you know, theoretically, it's kind of like-for-like.
So if—so for—Mr. Mayor, council members, so if you aren't familiar, the current services that I'm referring to, the treatment services are being provided, as I mentioned, in the care facility. Because it is too large of a unit, and for a variety of other reasons, they aren't currently operating, but—but want to remain in our area, and we want them to remain in our area. So we've worked closely with the economic development staff here at the city to identify another location that is suitable for the state. The location that we've identified is the Catholic Charities Building on Maryland Lane. Equally important is because we've been able to shift the state, and this is—this is—I think—if you don't know this, this is very important, because we've been able to shift the state over to this Catholic Charities Building, we've been able to recruit a—another private sector entity to come in and provide what's called PRTF, psychiatric residential treatment, which is another—it's going to be operated by a private sector entity, but supported through the state, and it's, again, another vital—vital psychiatric service that we need in our area. There's going to be three of them statewide. We've been identified as one of the sites. So again, in addition to the jobs that are being created by the state at the Catholic Charities Building, we're bringing in a whole new sec—a whole new contingent of workers into and good-paying, skilled jobs at the new PRTF building, what's what we refer to as the Care Building out on Western Avenue. So.
Thank you. Brent?
So from what I can understand, currently, we're not taking—we're not—because this is owned by Catholic Charities, we're not collecting any taxes on this whatsoever.
No.
Well, it's currently—the last two years has been vacant, we have collected taxes, but the prior 12 years or whenever it was constructed, we hadn't because they're operated.
So if it stays where we're—we're at, now we're going to continue to—what kind of taxes are we getting out of that?
But it's vacant. Remember, it's vacant, so I mean, I don't—
So we're not really losing much?
Well, we don't want to put our eggs in a basket of collecting taxes on vacant properties.
Well—
No, and I understand your question, I just want to make sure—
I'm just saying, I mean, if we're—I mean, I talked to Rod about this earlier, and I kind of understood where he was coming from, but if we're really not losing any taxes on this, the abatement's really not costing us anything.
Exactly.
But it's going to be, hopefully, creating so many more new jobs. If this would have been a building that was—had a previous tenant in it, was generating good, you know, taxes, you know, would worry me about it. But if it's something right now that's sitting vacant, and we pretty much are getting nothing from it, I'm going to have to consider this a win-win to go forward in this direction.
Thank you, Brent.
Your Honor, can I say one more thing? And just to, you know, the—the number isn't pulled out of thin air in terms of how this abatement is calculated. Amy and her staff have worked really closely with the municipal advisors to determine what is an appropriate return for this private sector entity. In order to get this entity in here, what is—what type of return are they going to expect? And there is a high level of risk when you're dealing with state contracts. You take the good with the bad. A state contract, yes, while it seems like there's some positives to that, they also do have a 30-day out, so they expect a—so it's not just a blanket 100% abatement. We look at what is a reasonable amount of return that's guided by the municipal advisors that Amy and her staff have worked with—with Ellers on, and we've identified what we believe is appropriate abatement, and that's what will be specified within that abatement agreement, not that maximum threshold that was included in your previous resolution.
So I believe the action that we're looking at taking tonight would be either amending or passing a new resolution that would—
Eliminate the requirements for job creation as part of the tax abatement for the property. Is that—do we need a—
I don't think that was—I don't think that was in it also.
I think we—I think it was part of the—I think it was part of the resolution that was passed that put a stipulation on jobs created, so do we need a new resolution, or do we just—
You can do a resolution amendment.
I'll tell you, Your Honor, members, the previous resolution was approving a property tax abatement for Fergus Falls Care Center LLC, subject to terms of the agreement, including wages and number of employees being provided.
So, Anthony, are you—would you offer—are you willing to offer a—a resolution amendment to that?
Y-y-yes, Your Honor. I mean, and basically, the reason that I'm prepared to do that is because, you know, for once, the city's actually going to help the county out here, and we know—we need to take pride in that, that by obviously shifting these 16 beds to the Catholic Charities, then that's going to allow the other facility of 60 beds to be fully operational again. So I think it's—it's not just a win for Fergus Falls, it's a win for the county. So with that, I would offer the amendment—to delete the words "including wages and number of employees."
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Justin. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
That resolution is approved. Thank you, Nick. Second item under Old and Unfinished Business was an update on H2M. Did we have—
Yes, Your Honor. I—I—I'm cognizant and keep bringing this up, and—and I—I kind of would like to try to get some resolution for myself as much as anybody, but, you know, part of—we—we engaged H2M, you know, to do two things, and the one thing they've created, obviously, was the video, but the—the other piece of it was to help counter some of the negative press that we get, and I—I think we need to start driving that. You know, it seems like, you know, the—the headlines are always that, you know, another store closed, another restaurant closed, another this closed, and we—we're not getting our message out there about the positive things in Fergus Falls. And I think we need to—either—we need to review what our remit is of H2M, or—or we need to basically find somebody else that's going to drive that message forward on the positive things that are happening in the community. And, you know, I mean, I haven't seen anything from them in terms of counter-press activity, you know, when—when, you know, I mean, I—I don't blame the Journal. I mean, Summa makes this press statement and announcement, but it's like, you know, Fleet Farm, there was a rumor going around that Fleet Farm was closing. That would have been a perfect opportunity for H2M to step up and get some counterintelligence out there and propaganda, you know, that says these—this is—any of this is not true, and we're not doing that. And, you know, and—and, you know, we keep saying that people have got to say positive things, you know, to counter the negative, but we never do it. And again, you know, we need to start doing it. We, you know, we're—we're spending the money. Let's—let's—let's get something, you know, that helps us.
Your Honor? Yeah, I—I agree with the positive approach that—I—I would encourage us to think about that. It was brought up in the Tax Levy Committee last year, that we have some way of positively portraying and—um, and again, I don't—the Journal reports as they—they will, but, you know, recently, there's a—there was a note about large number of people—the majority of people who had contacted the Journal said Fergus Falls was dying. Well, the sample size is really small. I would say that getting a comprehensive approach by someone who's a professional and saying, "There's a lot of good things going on, there are positive signs," and would be very helpful. So I just want to, you know, affirm that, that we consider that as staff and—and council members going forward in the next year, whatever we—that we make it clear that we need this positive narrative, I will say.
Thank you, Rod. Any other discussion?
No, I don't—I don't think—not over—over the next year. I think it needs to be done right now. We—we need—we need to have them put something together to get the positives out there. Not over the next year, but right now.
Starting right now.
Starting right now.
Your Honor, members, Amy should speak to this, because I think we're confusing the efforts of the EIC and the efforts of the—the contract retainer that the city has with H2M to offer some technical advice on—on our PR work. But what you guys are speaking about is—falls under the parameter of the contract that the EIC has with H2M, and—and that's not to make an excuse, but I—I think that that body is the one that really should be providing the update, rather than looking at city staff to do that, so Amy can speak to it.
Then I would add that the EIC hasn't seen anything either. So just so that the council know that this, you know, at this point in time, H2M hasn't delivered anything to the EIC.
Mayor, council members, the work of the EIC strategy that has been presented to the EIC Board with a—over the course of the last six months, including an update at the May planning session of the Board, continues as has been presented by EIC. We're on track and on schedule with that work. It was referenced, the release of the video, which was shown at the last council meeting. That is now running on PR TV on Channels 1 and 601. Radio spot is being produced to leverage the messaging coming out of the—the elements of the video and of the—the overall strategy around business, arts and culture, education, recreation and wellness. So we're continuing to push out those positive messages. You know, there's certainly—the Daily Journal has been covering positive pieces. The Sweetie's Ice Cream, just as example, that's one that pops up, a new entrepreneur who is creating wholesale organic ice cream locally, and we continue to work, like I said, to push the messaging out. In July, we'll be continuing the effort that came out of the video with billboard, Daily Journal pieces, and other components that were developed within that strategy. So the, you know, items are on track, as has been anticipated on those items.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. All right, so, under new business, I believe that we decided that we're going to consider Lois's request that she presented it in the open forum, so. Do we, Amy, do you want to, do you want to speak to this a little bit, just to recap so the public knows what?
You know, Your Honor, members, I'm not totally up to speed on what this exactly is, but Ms. Josephson's asking the city to submit a letter of support on behalf of the council for a legacy grant through the department, or the, not, the Historical Society, Minnesota Historical Society, excuse me, related to potential reuse opportunity of some of the buildings that are slated for demolition in Phase Two. I don't know, you know, more details on the grant opportunity than what was presented tonight, but one comment I wanted to make to the city council based on the comments earlier, Ms. Josephson indicated in her remarks that the letter of support should specifically affirm that the grant parties and their associates would have full access to the property for all usage and structural assessment that the grant request addresses, and that's using her words. There's two concerns that come to mind with that language, and I would caution us to include a letter of support to that effect, and the first is that there are active structural concerns with building thirty-two, and I have expressed this to Ms. Josephson and others. We have StanTech Engineering, they looked at this building and they're providing a structural analysis report, we have not seen those results yet, but they have been on-site doing that analysis, and I would caution allowing anybody access into that building until we get a, a full analysis of the structural concerns related to that building, and of course, that's a building that was connected to building thirty, which was removed in this Phase One demolition, and as some of those now exterior walls were exposed, the contractor and the city staff and the engineering company noticed some things that didn't look real good, and we wanted to explore further. So that's my first concern. And then my second concern with the council, you know, throwing their support behind this is that, you know, while this is progressing and Lois has had good conversations and dialogue, we've had no formal commitment or letter of intent with this group, and Lois can maybe speak more to that, but I have personally not met them, I had my, my first email correspondence with them earlier today, and I'd be hesitant to throw this broad level of support behind something until we're able to understand more, until we're able to come and visit the property. So that, that would be my two cents, and maybe Ms. Josephson could share more about the opportunity.
Yes, the opportunity to connect with you came today for the first time. It was a very positive email that, you know, might be nice to, to share with the staff, to see the, the breadth as we just finished the conversation about economic development.
Just, just to note, that, that email was shared with the council?
With the council. Okay, excellent. So, so that they're aware of the breadth of what this academic institution can bring to town as far as raising the visibility, public relation-wise, of the town. To the concern about the broadness of that language, that language is mine, and it can be modified. The bottom line of why that request is in there is, in speaking with the Historical Society about the grant, they said it should be submitted by the city because the city owns the property, and it's looking at assessing the property and what it would cost to repair certain aspects of it, to renovate certain aspects of it. In sharing that piece of information with Andrew and with the mayor, the administrator said, ufta, you know, we, we just had a long legislative session where money was, was passed to demolish the property, and, and how do we, you know, turn around and ask about assessing its cost for renovation? Number one, left hand and right hand, just as Councilman Rod spoke about earlier on the two different grants, so it's not going to the same place, and there isn't a problem with it from that perspective, but I understand what the sentiment might be on the council. So I placed a call to the Grants Division at the Historical Society, had previously spoken to them, and they said, you know, the city should do it, and I said, it's problematic in light of our circumstance at the present time with the pending Phase Two situation and the council's full willingness to receive proposals for redevelopment in that process, but they just feel uncomfortable going forward in this manner. Can somebody else go forward? And the answer, after a pause and thinking about it, was yes, somebody else can, but it will be imperative that the city have a letter of support because they own the property, and so, you know, that's somewhat benign to have that kind of a letter of support. But then he went on and said, the letter of support will need to say that the folks who are asking for the dollars to assess what it would cost to repair it have to, have, have access, have permission to the property, and unless the city says yes, they're going to have permission, you know, they're going to have access to the property to be able to assess it, the granting body is out on a limb to know whether they should honor the request. So that was my crack at, at driving to that point of, yes, the city will, will give access. And, you know, my experience was most positive as, as I was given access to have background to talk with ACBA about whether this property works, and that was a good deal. When it comes to folks looking at it, if they're interested in the property that StanTech is studying, somehow, they're going to have to be able to see something in that regard, and that's going to come up against ACBA, not the nonprofits, because the nonprofits wouldn't be looking at that segment of the property. So those are kind of an apples and oranges piece, so vis-à-vis this part, we're talking the, the buildings that we've already gone through, and so it won't deal with the, the StanTech-concerned properties.
Thank, thank you, Lois, I think it seemed to me that in light of Andrew's concerns, there would be a way for the council to draft a letter of support that addresses the fact that we have an ongoing study with StanTech, StanTech about the structural integrity of the property, and also somehow get language as they want, but make sure that we're not just turning over the keys to them during this.
Right, no, yeah, I, I don't think that.
I think, I think that we can, I mean, and it does fall in line with our statement that we want to entertain any reuse options as we, as we go forward, but I guess it's up to the, I, I think we can do those things if Ralph thinks we can, but I guess it's up to the council.
I guess, I guess, and Lois, you understand what the concern is.
Yes, I, yes, I do fully.
Yep, and, but then what I would suggest is perhaps you provide the language for approval by Andrew, whether or not that, that is something that is, goes too far or not far enough, and I think the council simply just allow Andrew the discretion to, to review the language that you propose, but you hear the concern, and, you know, and if Andrew thinks the language goes too far, he can tell you that.
Right, and we can, we can run some draft language past the Historical Society to say, you know, does this, does this acknowledge the fact that the city is willing to allow parties to assess this property, but they just, you know, want to be careful.
Is that, Rod, did you have a comment?
I'm allowed to speak on that, Your Honor, I think our engineer, this is a lot, you might understand, Lois, this is a lot to get at once, in my mind, maybe others are much more able to grasp the significance of this, but in light of our development, I would like to ask our engineer to be able to review it, and, help us understand how this affects the plan we already have in place and the access to the building. So to me, it's kind of a technical question, and Andrew certainly could work, could work with Brian, but that, that is, that is a problem for me, the speed at which we're trying to do this, and our other, and the plans we have in place, so I'm not opposed to trying to develop that, but I, we don't have a lot of information where direct staff contact of a technical nature is made with the developer, so I don't know what we can really do with that right now, myself, I would rather table it until the next work session and then have a chance to look at it and have Brian and Andrew show us about the language before we pass something and then say, we've already passed it. So I would rather, I would make a motion to table it till our next work session.
I think we could, what we can do is, judging by what Ralph's saying, is we could.
You got a motion.
We got a motion on the table.
Is there a second to table this until the next work?
I'll second so we can discuss it further.
Could I speak to, I think we're getting apples and oranges involved here, because we're talking about local nonprofits wanting to look at the kitchen and the dining room facilities predominantly, and that's not ACBA, so, so it's, it's our local nonprofits wanting to look at a maker space in those properties and get state assistance in assessing the costs for doing that.
Right.
I, I would think, can I just make a comment? To speak to your motion, Rod, I think that if we table this until, I think the thirteenth or the eleventh, I'm sorry, is when you said the next work session, or the next committee meeting?
Right.
If we table it until then, I think that'll probably give Brian and Andrew time to put together anything that they feel comfortable with, and we can come back and we can decide that's acceptable to us.
Right.
And then we're still within the timeframe that you need, Lois, and that way everyone gets a chance to have a little more time to think about it, but then, and take the advice of the.
Yeah, and it's just, it's set out of respect for what our staff does and the work that we rely on for them before we make a decision, and, and I'd like us to do that, so I, yeah, I'm in favor of that.
It will be a little bit challenging for multiple nonprofits to have a sense, have an opportunity to, to get a sense of what this place is like, and then turn around and write the grant in Thursday and half of Friday.
Your Honor? Is, is, isn't the grant, the grant is just for, these, these people are just consultants, they're not, they're not developers?
Correct, correct.
And, and so.
It's, it's local nonprofits and, and.
So the local nonprofits would be engaging these people to do this work?
Not ACBA, somebody else. ACBA is just one of the potential users of the service buildings, and they would need a large footprint, which means that it's possible, if they're, if they go forward, then it's possible for Fergus Falls to use pieces of those service buildings that they don't use for a maker space for entrepreneurs, creators and makers here in Fergus Falls, in the vein of launchpad that city officials from Fergus Falls went to Bemidji to see. So it's an opportunity to use a portion of those service buildings for a Fergus Falls launchpad.
I'm, I'm going to interrupt because the motion really isn't debatable at this point. A motion has been made, it's been seconded, I think it's proper just to move and take a vote on.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Could we just remind you?
Yes, the motion is to table the discussion until July eleventh, committee meeting at which time, and that's, that's the motion, to, to table.
July eleventh.
July eleventh, that's, that's the motion.
All in favor of that mo, that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, that motion carries. I do not believe there is any further business coming before the council. Just a reminder to everyone, of course, July fourth, all city facilities will be closed for Independence Day holiday, and happy Fourth of July, everyone. That, for adjourned.